Meeting in order, if you would, stand with me for a moment of silence and then as we stand and think about our neighbors and our country, just remember the Charlie Kirk situation. Also, just remember that just in a few days, we'll be remembering the hurricane that come to the Appalachians and the Blue Ridge, and also 24 years ago today, we had that tragedy that struck America.
Forever changed the world.
Ever changed the world, it did. So just remember all those things as we're standing here tonight and thinking about those things. So if you would, just bow your head for a few moments. Heavens, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Robert, I do appreciate you putting the flag on the screen for the ones in the corner.
Thank you.
Um, roll call, please.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Greaver?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Mr. Long?
Here.
And Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Recognition of visitors or delegation's participation. I'd like to welcome Dr. Mary Ralph. And I don't think Eddie is with us?
No.
So we'll get him, hopefully he can watch it later, but they're here to evaluate us for our Board of Distinction, which is part of our, what has to be done so we can get that, and we appreciate, appreciate you coming up and doing that. Second highlight is Doe Elementary School student spotlight.
Yes, and this year we're going to be spotlighting students, so this month is Doe, so they're going to do all the talking, I'm just going to... If someone turns it over to... So Acacia, you want to come up here?
She looks so pretty today.
So we have chosen Acacia, and it says, "Acacia embodies what it means to be hilltopper in every way. She uplifts those around her. She works hard even when the outcome doesn't matter. She does it all with a positive spirit. She is outgoing, kind, and considerate. She treats everyone like family, making each person feel seen, safe, and cared for." And I asked her teachers to tell me something about her, so they all got together, and her teacher said, "It's truly an honor to have Acacia in my class. She always is willing to lend a helping hand even when not asked. She is, if she sees someone in need, she steps in to help, plain and simple. Her words are always spoken with kindness. She never misses an opportunity to show gratitude. In fact, when even when I pass out papers and it's a test, she will say thank you." It's the simple acts of kindness show her heart. Our Acacia is a true and wonderful friend. We are thankful to have Acacia as part of our hilltopper family. We're proud of you.
You got some good stuff on this thing.
Yeah, she's really...
Figure you want to turn it this way and that way, I'm sure they're going to want your...
Make sure that you can get that. And here's the best part.
Is that cake?
It's cookie cake.
Woke you up.
They slide out of the pictures.
They slide out of the pictures.
And I didn't apologize for walking in late, it's a long way from here to Erwin, and the traffic is iffy at times, but I do apologize for walking in late. Next item is Johnson County Parents Coalition.
Yes. Okay, so I've got three main points I want to talk about. First one being that we did have our first meeting Tuesday, and it was a really good turnout. We did a little differently this go-around, we invited some PTO in, and parents really liked that, we were able to talk with them, get an idea of what we're going to be doing and kind of how we're going to help, and I've got, we've got a lot to talk about, you and I, when we have our meeting in next week or two. The second one is a parent shout-out, I'm, they wanted me to shout out Emma Robertson for the great job, excellent job that she is doing in her PR position. The difference, the different avenues for information have been really great. I wouldn't know half of the things that have happened in the school system if it wasn't for the Instagram updates Emma is sharing. It is a huge win. Parents are really excited to see what Emma's going to do next, so you'll let her know that she's done really good. And then the last one, and the most exciting, I think. I've had, I had a meeting with Timothy Hill today and our state attorney, and they have agreed to move forward with the elimination of the requirement for retention aspect in the third grade retention law. So that's a really, it's a big win for all of us, I think.
Good, I do.
And if I can have just a moment, she doesn't want to toot her own horn, but the amount of work she's put in on this with Tim and reaching out to teachers and admins to try and introduce this legislation to change that third grade retention law is impressive. Very, very impressive.
Yeah.
Because that's something that's not only going to benefit the students here in Johnson County, that's every third grade student in the state.
Yeah.
So this is huge.
But, you know, Johnson County is leading the charge to get the legislation changed for that release settlement.
Thank you. I wouldn't be able to do it though without the teachers and the administration and the parents backing me, you know, I'm just the loud mouth that's pushing it forward, they're really the ones doing the work, but thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Item number four, report of student board member Julia Cruz.
All right, so welcome, everyone. I can't believe a month has already gone by, but our high school has not been letting any moment go to waste. So I asked a few of our students what they did over Labor Day weekend. The answers that I got was went out on the lake, grilled hamburgers and hot dogs, and traveled to see family. So I just want to highlight a little bit of some stuff that our clubs and other school activities have, have been doing. So the FFA had a successful year at the Appalachian and Tennessee Valley Fair. We participated in multiple contests, including beef judging, public speaking, and even a grilling contest. I would also like to say, congratulations, this morning, the FFA school judging teams went down to Shady Valley and they competed in the district contest. One of our teams placed second overall, which means that they get to move on to the regional contest. The members of this team included Katie Tims, Caleb Jennings, Julia Cruz, and Emma Lippam. So our choir, we just want to say a huge good luck to Abel Johnson, Elsie Clifton, and Mackenzie Dickens. They will be auditioning for the All East Festival Choir on September 13th. This is a huge deal, and we were really proud of them for representing our school. Our theater department will be putting on Flowers for Algernon. This will be at Heritage Hall, so come out and see your students October 23rd through the 26th.
Are you in this one?
I am not, I wish I was. So our school is starting a new program called Sources of Strength, we are super excited for this. It's, so be on the lookout for that, it's a, our students are a part of it, and we are super excited for it. So volleyball, they have quite a few games going on this month. So home games they have on September 11th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, and they have away games on September 18th, 22nd, 25th, and 29th. Our football has all away games on September 12th, 19th, 26th, and October 3rd. And our FFA will be having their district forestry contest on September 25th, and their regional land judging again on October 2nd. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Julia, lift out something that I want to add on her. At the Tennessee Valley Fair in Knoxville, she placed first in the public speaking contest.
She, I guess she don't, never brag on herself for some reason. No. Thank you, Julia. Item number five, I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion that we approve the agenda.
We have a motion. A second?
I will second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? No discussion, call roll, please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Item number six, I'll turn the chair over to Director.
Okay, I would like, like to now open the floor for nominations for Board Chairman, there is no second needed, I just need a name.
Well, I'm of the opinion that Mr. Long's done an excellent job with that this past year, and I'll make a nomination that he continue in that role.
Is there any other nominations? If not, nominations will cease, and in this ward will you call for all?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Long?
All right. Yes. I guess.
Congratulations, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate that. Need to open the floor for Vice Chairman.
I nominate Chad Greaver.
Have a nomination for Chad Greaver? Any other nominations? There are none? Call roll, please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Ms... Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda you would like to remove?
Mr. Chairman, we do need to pull the federal products acknowledgement, and Ms. Littford and I will explain the reason why we're pulling that for a little bit further discussion.
That is...
Under the amendments.
Attachment seven, that one?
Yeah, it's attachment seven B.
Okay.
We'll leave the court in, but we need to pull the federal projects off to have just a little bit of discussion.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything else to pull on? Need a motion to approve all but that, unless there's something else you need to pull off?
I'll make the motion that we do that with the exception of the federal products acknowledgement.
A second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Where are you at, Tina?
You have control.
Okay, so, just looking at this acknowledgement for the federal programs, we just need to take a quick look at the portion that's 21st century. And the auditors just want to make sure that we have the correct wording in our acknowledgement, and we just want to make sure that Dr. Simcox is in the role of director for the 21st century program. She was in that role before she became director, and she was allowed to continue that on. And that is in her contract, but in addition to that, well, she's the director of the programs for Johnson County High School, Johnson County Middle School, and Mountain City Elementary. And then she also does the data entry for all three schools, and she also assists with the summer learning programs. So she gets a, a small stipend for doing the directorship, which like I said, she's had pretty much her entire career here at Central Office. And then also there is like an additional stipend that might come along if she does more time with summer learning, or just if something was to come up, like some kind of in-service. So the auditors just want to make sure that you're aware that there's different roles in there, and that there might be other stipends besides just the directorship.
Okay, and what brings us about is, you know, we are basically trying to finish up last year's audit. And we brought this in 24 to the board when we amended her contract to put the language in that, that the board understood that we were going to pay her a base amount, plus she would receive additional compensation from federal programs. And they came back to us and said, you know, we need to make sure that we're specific in what we're putting in the minutes, because we don't have to have any formal approval of this because it's federal projects, we're basing the approval based on what the Department of Education is telling us. But in order for us to do that, we need to make sure that we get the correct verbiage in the minutes for them to be able to see that the board is aware that she will be paid a stipend to be the director, as well as paid additional compensation to do the data entry.
And this is coming from the comptroller?
From the comptroller's office, yes. And to do the addition, to do the data entry for the summer, summer-related activities that come with this. And then I will take this even a step further that it was brought up, because there was a question came up, you know, in our, in our budget discussions, when we had the discussion about giving the certified employees increases, and I think this past year it was, was it 2,500 if I'm remembering correctly, or was it 2,000?
2,000.
2,000.
I care for state.
Yeah, it did, but in that, it was acknowledged, and we understood in our discussion that 10-month teachers would receive the 2,000, and 11-month teacher would receive 2,200, a 12-month teacher would receive 2,400. Well, in this case, her position is treated as certified personnel, and the auditors want us to acknowledge to put into the minutes that it is understood and we understand that she received $2,400 of additional, received a $2,400 bump in her base salary as opposed to 2,000.
Okay.
It's, it's all, you know, the world that we live in, it's all about transparency. And again, you know, we don't have to take any formal action, it just needs to be noted in the minutes for this.
Okay.
And that's the reason I asked if we pull that out so we could discuss it, does that make sense to everybody?
So everyone who is on a 12-month contract, including, you know, principals, central office, you, the whole nine yards?
They receive...
All receive 2,400?
Yes.
As opposed to the 10-month, which was...
2,000.
2,200.
Yes.
That's what the governor was talking about, and he said, when they, when they doled out the 2,000, they were talking about 10, nothing more.
Because that was going to be my first question, which you asked, is, were we talking about Lewis Audit or comptroller audit? So this is coming from the comptroller?
This comptroller.
It's because I'm contracted through...
It's all based because of the contract.
Contract.
Contract, that she's a contracted employee of the Board of Education.
Okay, then we need separate...
I guess, let's do this since the fact that we are sort of, we're not necessarily backtracking, we're just acknowledging that it's understood that she will receive $2,400 of additional compensation to her base contract, I think just so that we're, it's, it's clear, and we will make this part of the budgetary approval process, and we'll put the verbiage into the, into the motion when we approve next year's budget that states that. I think let's back up and let's actually do an approval on everything that I just talked about, even though we technically don't need it for the federal side of it.
Okay.
And I'll make that motion, and Karen will, will work the verbiage out tomorrow.
Have you got that?
Uh, yes.
Okay, you're going to work the verbiage out tomorrow? Ever who seconds that, will that be all right? As a second? Ever who's going to second it?
So this is to keep us out of trouble with the comptroller's office?
Yeah, well, it's...
And not have an exception on the audit?
Bingo. And it's really more to make sure that there's a clarification, that where the comptroller's office understands the clarification of exactly what makes up her salary in the bits and pieces. But also, it, it helps to make sure that the clarification is there, that the board is aware that this additional compensation is being paid. This turned into an all-afternoon discussion one afternoon.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion, off roll.
I'll second.
We've got a second, any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Back, back up, catch up. Item number eight, discussion and approval of insurance committee looking at vendors for the school's benefit package calendar year 2027. Wanting to have a representative from the school board to serve on committee.
And this is just something that has been brought to us to maybe open this back up, this is our benefit package, this is our dental, our vision, cancer, anything that the employee is responsible for, this is not our medical insurance, we're with the state with that. But we did this, Dr. Long was over this as a supervisor probably four or five years ago, we had an insurance committee and, and put bids out there for anyone who wanted to, to bid for these benefit packages, and we just had a request to, to do that again, so.
And I'll chime in a little bit here. We've... I've got a unique perspective with the fact that I see all of this data because of what my daytime job is. And for the past three years, or four years, we've seen increases annually to what our employees are paying for this voluntary insurance. And this will be the first time in four years that they will actually have the same dental provider for two years as opposed, the dental has changed.
Keeps moving around.
It keeps moving around. And I'll just be real honest with you, we're having a lot of communication issues with the current broker, we can't get data submitted, we can't get changes made, and there's just a lot of backstory behind the scenes as far as trying to keep all this reconciled, and make sure that we're paying things correctly, that the employee is getting the benefit of the insurance, that the employee has the right kind of, you know, if they sign up for, you know, dental with employee plus child, that that's in place, that, that all that, and we're having difficulty with the broker. And, you know, that was sort of what we got into with the previous broker, not being able to provide the servicing that was necessary, and I'm the one that sort of has led the, the lead with this with Dr. Simcox, that I think maybe it's time we go back to the open market and just see what we get for calendar year 27.
And potentially get a new type of coverage from a different provider.
From a different...
Because being, being very, very honest, I've had a lot of staff reach out to me, they are not happy.
No.
About the particular coverage that we have right now. Not happy at all.
And I'll just tell you, it's a nightmare from the administrative side to try to keep it straight.
I don't have a problem with it. Who wants to be on that committee?
I think the obvious choice for this would be Mr. Robinson.
And he was, he was the representative last year.
Well, so...
And I'll, I have no problem serving in that capacity.
And Mr. Haggeman's going to take over and supervise that from, from our role.
No, I mean, the biggest thing is, this would be effective for calendar year 27, not 26.
Six, okay.
Because we're, we're right up on open enrollment, so we have to stay with the vendor through 26. But this would be a potential change for 27, which would go into effect in January.
Might be a good, to help them adjust a little bit, tell them that you're looking. They might straighten up a little bit.
I think they, they sort of know that this was coming.
Okay. I don't think we need any, but you've already got, we need a motion on that? Don't think we need a motion on that, do you?
I don't know we need a motion, because there's no, just as long as everyone's in approval.
Okay. Uh, item number nine, approved first and final reading of Board Policy 6.2312, use of personal communication devices and electronic devices. Changes made required by TSBA.
Yes, you all did approve this policy in July, when we sent that to TSBA, they asked us to add just two statements to that, and that was to add that when the device is being used by a student with a disability for the operation of assistive technology, that they can use that. And also that we had to add that we have an emergency communication plan, which we do, we, we contact, anytime there's an emergency, we contact that through our school system call-out. So those were two things they asked that we add, so we're doing a first and final reading on this, because it was just two simple additions that they asked, so we will need a motion on this. Any questions on that?
First and final read, I need a motion?
All motion.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second, any further discussion on that? Call roll, please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Greaver?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Uh, presentation of TISA Accountability Report.
Yes, and we just, this is something we're required by law to do every year, and so Ms. Wilson and I are going to present our TISA Accountability Report, and I'm going to let her start, the first two goals are primarily...
All right, so the first goal, of course, with the TISA Accountability Report, has to do with reading proficiency by third grade, and our goal was that, um, we, we wanted 30%. In 24, 25, I think we actually changed this a little bit, because we actually exceeded what we had by just a little bit, we didn't, I thought we...
It was 20, I'm going to waste it.
Was it, but I thought our goal was 28 points.
No, this one didn't change, it was the other, it was the other one, it was the other one that changed.
All right, okay. So we had 20, we were 3/10 of a point then from that, we had 29.7, and we honestly were a little bit scared that we might not make that goal based on what happened last year. And so we got almost at it, and so, and it also was a 3.7% increase, that's what I'm thinking of, from the year before. And so we actually did better on our data, you know, like we grew, even though I'm really am not sure how we did that, it's because of the hard work of our teachers, but we actually grew from the prior year, 3.7%. And the data from 20, from 23, 24 was 26%, so our goal for this year is that 30%, and then we are hoping to be at 34. We are not satisfied with this at all, we hope that we will exceed this, um, so, but we are going to continue to work hard, we use our TISA funds to purchase our high-quality instructional materials, and fund summer school opportunities, tutoring, and intervention. Our district coach provides a ton of support to teachers, you know, especially at that third grade level, by working with them on planning lessons, modeling lessons, just going in and just being, just, you know, offering an extra set of hands, or, you know, giving teachers tips, tricks on what to do, and then we provide professional learning, of course, to teachers and administrators. On our, the goal for our math for this year is to be at 22.5%. And we are really struggling with math, we have had tons of conversations about that with our principals, our teachers, our whole administrative team, that's what, we met this morning to talk about that, and we, we put some things in place to address it. And last year we were at 20.5, which was a 2.1% decrease. And we were at 22.6 the prior year, and so we're hoping by the 27, 28 school year, we can be at 26.5, but again, like we hope that we will surpass that. And I will say, the third grade data does not include Connections Academy, because they do not have third grade, but the math for 312, it is included, because their students do test, you know, for that math goal, and so we are working closely with them as they try to improve their math scores as well.
And when we do report our presentation, we will break that out, but for TISA accountability, we can't, because their students flow through us as well.
So these totals do include Connections?
On, on goal two and three. Goal one, no, because they do not have third grade.
And again, the same types of things, you know, TISA funds are used to support our materials implementation, summer school, tutoring, coaches, you know, professional development, and then we're also, we've had support from instructional partners, and then also the core office is providing some additional support for our math this year.
Uh, for goal three, this one is based on college readiness, so our goal is that 30% of students will meet the ACT composite college readiness benchmark score by the 2026 school year. Now this one does just include our students. Um, we had 26.8%... We had twenty six point eight percent of our students meet this benchmark. Very proud of that, because it's a four point four percent increase on the previous year. We've used our TISA funds for I X L, A C T tutoring before and after school. We give the pre-A C T and the pre-A C T eight nine tests. We have provided a lot of professional development around helping increase our A C T scores. And our teachers at the high school do A C T questions of the day as bell ringers. So that is the three goals for TISA that we have, that we, fifty five dollars this year is what it was per student. When you go up to the next one, that's the weights. That's seventy percent state, thirty percent local. This is some students. This is not all, this is some, and it's based on five criterias, and that's the criteria listed. Then you go up to direct, direct is a hundred percent state, and again, that's some students, not all, and it's based on prior year data, and it's based on the five criteria around academics. Some misconceptions out there that I've heard, that we get funding based on attendance. There is nowhere in TISA that you get funding based on attendance. That is not even a part of TISA. And then the outcome bonus, and again, it's like it says, it's a bonus. We might get it. We did get it last year. It's a hundred percent state, and it's subject to if there's any funds available. And it's based on criteria around assessments, and you can get that based on one bonus a year. The TISA goals, again, we just went over those, third grade literacy, post-secondary readiness, and whole child. Something that is not funded in TISA, that people probably don't realize, pre-K is not in TISA. That's an additional, that's an additional cost. The summer school that we're required to do, not in TISA, unfunded mandate. One-time grants, like Twenty First Century Leaks, that we're very proud to have, that's not in TISA. Federal money's not in TISA, and salary equity's not in TISA. That's why we're a part of TESSE, so we can get that. I did, for you all, I did give you a breakdown, so you could see what we get. And this actually does include Connections Academy.
Sure.
And like I said, we will have a little session on this when we have our board retreat in the, in the spring, January, February. But this just sort of breaks it down by what we see. This is how we know what we're getting for each school. This is how we know what to pull out for Connections Academy. And you can see, there's your base. That's what we get for each student, and then it breaks it down into each category. If you notice under small, we're not listed, but we're not considered small in the state's eyes. We're considered sparse, we're not considered small, so that's why we don't get any funding for, for small. And then you have ten unique learning needs. Those are characterized depending on if you're identified as a special ed student, or if you have E L L, and they're all different. Then you have a C T E component, and an A C T component, and that breaks it down to the TISA total. That's why it is so important that our students are coded correctly. And I will, I do want to just commend Jesse Lane on that. Having that person, the right person in that position to make sure our students are coded correctly, that's how our funding's based. So, you know, if you have any specific questions, I just wanted to share this, because some of y'all hadn't went through this, and Chad, I don't think we did that at board retreat last year, so, but we will go in that in a little bit more depth, because Mr. Walker had asked me about it, and I hate that he couldn't be here tonight, but please look over this. If you have any questions, please reach out. But this is how we know what we're getting. This is, this was the final allocation. Just wanted to share that with y'all. Do you have any questions?
Are there other programs that factor into this as far as, you know, increasing funding, like Head Start, pre-K, central cafeteria, things along those lines? Those don't factor into increasing the funding?
And I think didn't, like, Madam McGlamry's program.
Coordinate School Health.
Rolled into this as well.
It rolled into this.
Family Resource Center rolled into this.
Family Resource Center rolled into this. That used to be their own little, I guess, allocation.
They had their own allocations of pots of money.
But they, they rolled into this two years ago.
On the previous goal, what is the A C T benchmark, eighteen, twenty?
Twenty one is what.
Twenty one?
Yeah. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, item number eleven, discussion and decision about live streaming work sessions.
This is something that, you know, you all had asked for us to put on, and then we tabled it, and so we put it back on this month.
Anybody have any? We talked about that one time before, and Ms. Wills had a statement on that before. Did you have that, you have that handy?
Just the fact that the National Crisis Center, they had shared with us in different meetings about just the effects of some of the things that had happened over the past several years, that's happened on our faculty and our kids. It was nothing written, he had just said, he stated that in a meeting that we had at Nuncie Elementary.
He had stated that, it wasn't another, what a statement that they had written of that.
I know Dr. Simcox was there, Mr. Graver was there.
Mr. Jentry.
Mr. Jentry.
Well, there, to me, there's, there's things that we discuss in a work session that is the reason we have work sessions. That it's not anything we're trying to hide, is there's, there may be safety concerns, or maybe.
Students and clients, attorney-client privilege.
Yeah.
Well, those would be in closed work sessions.
They're closed work sessions.
So that's, that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah.
You know, the, the whole thing, and I hammer this, just transparency, 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 and community involvement. If you go back, if you actually get on YouTube and look at the number of people that watch our meetings now, our ratings are through the floor. If we were on TV, we'd be canceled. So, I mean, it's one of those things where the people who are tuning in now are obviously tuning in because they want to be involved in what's going on. We dropped from four to eight thousand people watching these board meetings to last month, you had two hundred and seventy four people.
Yeah.
So those are people who genuinely want to be involved in what's going on. I think we've done a fantastic job the last few months as far as trying to keep people involved, trying to explain what's going on. Just the more you involve the community, the less there is for them to be worried about, or, or claims of things going on that aren't being told to them, et cetera. So I'm a huge fan of continuing to stream them, but I also understand where you're coming from. I really do. I get it.
And, you know, and I've made this comment a couple of times, you know, work sessions are to be informal. They're, they're, they're to allow dialogue. And we don't get that dialogue a lot of times from staff, when we need to be hearing from staff, because that camera's there. And, you know, you know, and I'll be the first to tell you, there's nothing in state law anywhere that says we're required to do any of this. However, we said the precedent during COVID, I have no problem with us continuing the regular meeting, but I think at some point, we need to have that less informal approach to the work sessions, even though, yes, they're still an open meeting, they're still published, public's still invited to attend, to listen, just like it is now. But it cuts a lot of that stigma away of, you know, if we have a principal make a comment that, and we all know how social media is, take it, and next thing you know, it's twisted the opposite direction. And sometimes, we need to hear that dialogue without the fear and the stigma of what it's going to be projected to, to, to the social media platform. And, you know, so therefore, I have no problems with the live stream of the regular meeting, but I think we need to take some of that stress off of our staff, to know if we're in a work session, that they can have that open dialogue with us without having that repercussion of something being said and twisted the wrong way on the world wide web.
Do everything?
You know, like when we all just turn and stare at each other.
I agree with Mr. Robinson, because most people don't feel comfortable in front of a camera. And if you have a real problem, and I feel like if you want to be here, and it's that important to you, you will come to the open work session.
Well, I'll field a...anybody want to make a motion? One way or the other?
Well, I'll make it easy. I'll make the motion that we no longer stream work sessions, but we continue to live stream regular meetings.
You have a motion?
I'll second the motion.
And a second. Any further discussion?
You know, and again, we're not, we're being transparent with this. The meeting's still posted, the public's still allowed to come, under the circumstances, unless it's one of those three that we mentioned earlier, which makes it a closed session.
Right. And work sessions are recorded.
They are recorded.
They're recorded, they're just not videoed.
That's right.
If, if this passes. Any other discussion? Call roll please.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Graver?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Item number twelve.
Five-year plan update. Just this, this month's update is to ensure teachers are using high quality instructional materials with fidelity to ensure students are exposed to rigorous curriculum and learning opportunities. And you may say, what does that mean? We just make sure that our teachers have the resources they need to, to provide those rigorous lessons, and our administrative staff does walkthroughs. They've actually been doing walkthroughs the past two weeks. So, and with the core office, with supervisors, with principals. So we, we do work hard to make sure that those rigorous lessons are being taught, which will help with our test scores. Just an update on that.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, you answered part of what I was going to ask as far as, because we didn't get to go over the five-year plan in board retreat.
Right.
You know, I was just curious what this statement really means, as far as what are the actions that go along with that? How do you evaluate it, and, you know, how do you make sure that all these things are happening?
You do it through the, the formal evaluation process, but there's also walkthroughs that, especially at the elementary level, they do quite often with the core office and, you know, with supervisors. Angie, do you want to comment?
One thing that we need to come in at the elementary level this year, thanks to the work of the principals, we have common planning across the district at different grade, you know, for all grade levels. And just today, we had common planning meetings for three through six E L A. And so, you know, in grades three through six, we are departmentalized, and there's just that one E L A teacher per grade level. Well, through this, we're able to do virtual meetings. So that all third grade E L A teachers are planning, and they're prepping their lessons together, and they're working, you know, together to make sure that they understand the curriculum. If they have questions, they can talk about maybe struggles that their kids are having, and they have a team to work with, even though there's not necessarily that other person that does the exact same thing in their building. So we've done a lot of things, you know, we just continue to look for ways that we can improve, and that was one of the things this summer that we were able to do.
So everybody in third grade is on planning at the same exact time, and that kind of lets them work together like community, as far as, ready?
Mr. Hagaman, do you want to speak to seven twelve? Because I know he's been involved with those at the middle school and the high school.
Yeah, we, we conduct walkthroughs quite often to evaluate high quality instructional materials and make sure we're on the same page. Dr. Long and I have done that, and Ms. Harding and I have just finished with the math department this week.
Again, our focus this year is math, so we are putting a lot of resources into math.
And I think, you know, this is our second year of having a new teacher induction program.
It is, which has been wonderful.
And this helps to reinforce that first and second year teacher as well with that additional support, because the fact, if the induction coach is in there, she's not there to do a formal evaluation, it's there to observe, to give the strategies.
Yes.
And I think that, you know, I, I think that's, we're, with that, we're well on our way to retaining teachers and not losing them from the frustration.
We just wanted to share that. Anything else, Chad?
What's our next curriculum adoption? Math?
No, math, we just did math. It's soc.
Social studies?
Social studies, or C T E? C T E. Social studies is next year, because we, we were just talking about the other day, it's, it's not a big math, it's not a big textbook adoption when it comes to C T E, because a lot of their resources, and, and Mr. Adams couldn't be here tonight, a lot of their resources are more hands-on and, you know, but we do have a few.
Because I was kind of going hand in hand with that. While it's, it's your all's job to make sure that they're using H Q I M's, it's our job to provide them to them.
Yes.
And to make sure that we do that.
Okay, any other, any other question, comment? Budget update, Tina?
So I've given you a summary financial statement. It includes general purpose schools, federal projects, central cafeteria, and Head Start. You do not have a printout yet for sales tax and property tax, because we've not yet received revenue. I've highlighted revenues and expenditures, and if you take a look at the revenues on the general purpose side, it's only nine hundred and seventy nine thousand, four thirty four and two cents. But just remember, that's only for July's revenue. So it doesn't show anything yet for August and September, and so only two percent was showing as received. And then expenditures, three million, five hundred and eighty six thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty three cents, with seven point four percent having been expended, just looking at general purpose. So if you have any questions about this, or anything else relating to the budget, you know, please reach out to me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have anything for Tina? Other comments?
Nope.
Item number fourteen, we don't have any papers turned in for public comment, so Director.
Yes, just, this is the time of year we need to appoint a new legislative representative. Last year it was Chad, so just need to see who y'all would like to be your legislative representative for this year.
You stayed real busy with that, didn't you, Chad?
You better believe it. It was a real fun, real fun year with the government.
Yeah.
You want to go again?
No, I'd actually like to nominate Mr. Robinson for that.
Okay.
Because he was originally nominated to do it last year, so I think it's, I think it's fair he'd get a shot at it this year, because you said you hadn't done it.
Okay.
So I'll nominate Mr. Robinson for that.
All right. You too.
I accept.
All right, Mr. Robinson is our new legislative representative.
Hey, Karen will let T S B A know. Just want to say thank you to our bus drivers. Today is Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and if you've been on Instagram or Facebook, I know Emma has done a great job of posting pictures where they've honored the bus drivers, so we just want to say thank you for all you do. They are the, the first people that see our students, and the last people to see them get off the bus. So they set the tone for the day, and we have wonderful bus drivers, so thank you all. And I want to say thank you to F F A for the beautiful mums that they provided for the school board members. So please make sure that Mr. Dagger and Mr. Boyd say that we appreciate that. Ms. Osburn, and that is all I have.
What's her name down there? Does she have anything to say?
What's her name?
We went.
There is a joke behind that.
There's a joke behind it.
We went to Fall District meeting in Morrisam, and I had to get up and introduce everybody in front of everybody, and I introduced everybody and could not remember Holly's name.
And we're all sitting at the table going, Holly, Holly, Holly.
They were across the room.
It's Holly.
Holly, Holly, you got anything on?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Our country is divided, and I'm going to go off on a little bit of a tangent here, sort of. Twenty-four years ago today was one of the last times we have all been united as Americans. I mean, we are a divided country. There is just so much anger and so much hatred, and then when you look at the events of yesterday with the loss of life of Mr. Kirk, we have got to somehow find in our hearts.
Common ground.
Common ground, how to talk to each other civilly with people you don't agree with, and sit down and talk with them, and figure out how to come together as a nation again. One nation, period. And I think we need to do that at the national level, state level, and right here in Johnson County. That is something that is very important, and I just, I hope we all will take that to heart.
Mr. Ralph?
You know, I, I, you know, will echo what Mr. Graver's saying, and, you know, and I'm a firm believer that partisan politics have no business being at the local level, because when you get to partisan politics at the local level, you end up not doing what's best for the community, and especially partisan politics on this board, we're not doing this, we're not doing what's best for kids.
True.
And I think we do need to come up with some way to unite and have common ground. What happened to the days of that you could agree to disagree without the fear of someone pulling a gun and shooting you?
Yeah, that's true.
And, you know, I think we need to pray for our country. We need to pray for this world, because it's very volatile what we're, what we're seeing going on overseas.
That's true. Do, want to thank Dr. Ralph for coming, for spending your time coming over and evaluating us. We do appreciate it. Thank you all for coming out. Thank the teachers and what they do.